I know we're still waiting for Director Bianco to arrive. He is, he will be here very soon. And so I think we'll get started. Good afternoon. A call to order, the special meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors. Today, June 2nd, 2021, here in Palm Desert. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in this world.
Yes. So I do have some introductory remarks that are slightly different than our ones we've been using. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being held, conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive orders in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, both in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. The Governor's executive orders N25-20 and N29-20 suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and district board members and staff may choose to participate in person or by video conference. The meeting is being livestreamed on the district's website and the district's YouTube channel. Public comments regarding matters on the agenda may be made in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building or by joining the Zoom video conference and notifying the clerk of the board in advance. Members of the public may also use the raise hand feature in Zoom where, when the board president calls for public comment. As stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda were given the opportunities to submit comments by mail or email to the district, such comments will become part of the board meeting record. If you are attending this meeting in person, please come up to the microphone and maintain six-foot distancing between speakers, meaning people. As your, after your comments, please follow the arrows to exit through the west door, which would be that way. Stage right. Clerk will report at this time if general public comments are received. Do we, do we have anything that fits that category?
We don't have any, Mr. President, we did not receive any general public comments. And I don't, I did not receive notification of any members online or in person at this time.
Okay. And we do have two directors that will be attending remotely, and so I'll make sure to call on them by name and make sure they have opportunities to participate. And we also will have roll call vote. Okay.
And we would recommend a roll call today to get the meeting started because we do have people on teleconference.
Yeah, and that would be next on the agenda is roll call.
Start. Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Good afternoon, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so we have all five, two here personally and two, I'm sorry, three here present in person and two over the Zoom. Public comments. I guess now if people want to, if anyone's on Zoom and wants to raise their hand, now would be the time?
For general public.
Correct.
Correct.
And I, from looking at the members online, it's staff and members of the board online or consultants, so we do not have any public members online.
Understood. Okay. All right, so this brings us to our action item, which is essentially two public hearings, one for the West Whitewater River Sub Basin and one for the East Whitewater River Sub Basin racks. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the proposed replenishment assessment charges for the Mission Creek Sub Basin, West Water, Whitewater River Sub Basin, and East Whitewater River Sub Basin areas of benefit. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearings, making the presentation this morning. This afternoon is Jeff Keel, Director of Finance.
Thank you, President Powell, members of the board. Before the board opens the public hearings under the Prop 218 process on the proposed replenishment assessment charges for fiscal year 2022 through 26, I'll give a brief overview of how we got to this point today. A year ago, we executed a contract with Corolla Engineering to conduct a five-year cost-of-service study on canal replenishment in domestic water lines of business for fiscal years 2022 to 2026. The project began last March with a collection of revenue and expense and customer data and future operations needs and capital needs for those lines of business for the five-year study. First overview was given to the board on October 6, 2020, and considering the times we are in these days, board gave initial direction to do whatever we could to reduce costs, use reserves when appropriate, and reduce capital and operations expenditures to minimize the rate increases. We had board input that continued to come in over a series of four additional study sessions on replenishment that occurred on December 10th, February 16th, March 25th, March 8th, and then on March 13th, the board received and filed their draft reports for the West, East, and Mission Creek replenishment areas of benefit and authorized the mailing of Prop 218 notices for the East and West replenishment assessment charges, charges or racks. For the West rack, the financial plan include, included a 15% increase in the first year coming up, followed by 20% increases for the next four years. And for the East rack, we have a financial plan includes a nine-and-a-half percent increase for 2022 and 2023, and then 3% increases for the following three years. Alex Bugby from Corolla, who is our expert on canal and rack, is on the line to answer any final questions of the board relating to the replenishment reports, which are included in the packet, and also our Prop 218 expert, Lutvi Karuuf from BB&amp;K, is also on the line to answer any legal questions from the board. And I have on, this is, that's the whole presentation right there on the board, that's the rates. And with that, I'll, we'll entertain any questions from the board.
We'll have chance for board participation as the public hearings progress as well. Do we have any board questions or comments at this time?
No questions from me.
Thank you, Director.
No questions either.
Okay, thank you. Glad to hear your voice. Good, well then, why don't we get into it? At this, this is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on the proposed schedule of rate increases for the replenishment assessment charge to be levied upon groundwater producers in the West Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and establishing the replenishment assessment charge for fiscal year 2022. Clerk Bermudez, have we completed proper notification of this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. Notice of the public hearing and the proposed rate increases were given by direct mail to property owners and tenants of 5,446 parcels, which could be affected by the proposed rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge in the West Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit, and notice was published in a newspaper of general circulation. As proof of proper notice, we have the United States Postal Service Consolidated postage statement, standard mail, and proof of publication from the Desert Sun and the affidavit of posting.
Thank you. I will defer to legal counsel regarding the purpose of today's public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The requirements of Proposition 218 and the State Water Code, Section 31631 and 31632 are being followed. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the mailing of the notice, and the notice was published in newspaper of general circulation at least 10 days in advance of this meeting. The purpose of the hearing is to hear oral testimony and to consider written protests concerning the proposed resolution, which would authorize the adjustments to the rates. A customer or property owner is not required to provide oral testimony in order to submit a written protest. A written protest must specify that it is being submitted in protest, include the customer's or property owner's name, parcel number, and/or service address, and it should be, and must be signed. If written protests against the proposed rates are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the rates are to be imposed, the board may not impose the adjustments to the rates. If written protests are not presented by a majority of owners, then the board may proceed to consider the adoption of the resolution to impose the adjustments. As explained in the Prop 218 notice, the publications and the agenda for this meeting, individuals wishing to address the board were given the opportunity to provide written comments in advance of the meeting by mail or email, and individuals may provide public comment during this meeting via telephone or the online meeting platform. Any protest submitted via email must include an image of the person signing, of his actual, of it being signed, and protests must be received by the district prior to the close of the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I hereby declare the public hearing open and will request that those wishing to speak, please give your name and property location and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll now hear from anyone who wishes to come forward to speak. And I don't see anyone in this room. Do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. President, we do not have members of the public online.
Thank you. Clerk Bermudez, have we received any written communications?
Mr. President, we have not received written communications for the West area.
I'm prepared to close the public hearing, however, before I do that, I'd like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest the opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, state law prohibits us from accepting any further written protests. Are there any remaining written protests to be delivered to the board clerk? We didn't actually receive any, huh? Hearing none. I hereby declare the public hearing closed. We will now have the written protests tabulated, and there were none received. Correct?
Mr. President, that is correct.
Okay. Oh, here.
I guess I have my, I should read.
Yeah, you have a, yeah, go ahead.
I have an area to read.
You have a script. You have a whole paragraph about that.
5,446 parcels have been identified that could be affected by the proposed rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge in the West Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit. In this instance, a majority protest would exist if the district received 2,724 written protests prior to the close of this public hearing. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the district received zero written protests from qualifying owners and tenants of the identified parcels. A majority protest does not exist, and the board may proceed to consider adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I think at this time, we do have to recognize that we did get a piece of correspondence from Costell and Adelson Lock Operation.
That's for the East.
For the East. Well, he's also saying he recommends we write in protest to the new rack rates, which I would have to infer were both the East and the West areas in abundance of caution, but I would also recognize at this point that we do not believe Mr. Roberts has standing because he does not pay the rack rates directly.
All right, well.
No, we'll say one.
Okay.
Just out of the abundance of caution.
Right, so we did receive a letter from a law firm.
That uses the word protest.
Comment letter.
Great, and that has been circulated. Go ahead, Director Nelson.
So, Mr. Ferre, with this letter, you had indicated in regards to this letter, you had indicated that a person would have to, in order to be counted, would have to list their name, their physical address, or APN number. Does this, does this letter from Costell and Adelson meet those requirements?
This individual, Mr. Roberts, is represented by counsel, and so if this matter were, were to be considered by a court, the court would most likely say that because of representative by counsel may indicate themselves and the protests, that it would be considered a valid protest. But to Mr. Barrett's point, in order to file a written protest in regard to the West rack rate, somebody has to be a customer of a West, of a West rack charge or a property, and/or property owner of a West rack charge. So if it's clear that this individual and through his attorney is not a customer paying West rack charges, then for the record, we would not have to count that protest as a, as one of the protests for the West rack.
I guess further to this, we've been advised that Mr. Roberts is no longer a resident of the Coachella Valley, so again, he would seem to lack standing unless the attorneys have brought on a new client to represent them in, in this particular issue.
So normally, does that answer your question?
Well, it says, it says in the very, it says in the very beginning, this letter is submitted on behalf of all Coachella Valley just water district customers who pay rack rates.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not just Mr. Roberts, but all.
Yeah, it, it makes me wonder if the attorney who wrote the letter actually has communicated with all of the people that do have standing and that they all are protesting. I, I haven't seen evidence of that.
So in the, in the normal course, if somebody were to file a protest letter where, where it wasn't clear, or we thought that individual's not a customer or a property owner or a resident, we would have staff verify that through the customer records to make sure whether or not there was indeed an account. So here, because it's.
Okay.
So here is just one, yeah.
Okay.
So even if we did count it as one, it would be, not be sufficient to meet the requirement of 50% protest?
Yes, so if we were close to that, then we would examine it further. I just don't, I mean, certainly up to the board, but I'd, in terms of the cost effectiveness of researching it further, I don't.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, it was brought to my attention by staff that because the district does string this on YouTube, and YouTube does allow a feature for comments, there is an individual who is listening to us through YouTube, doesn't provide an address, and I don't have a name, so I don't know if they are a customer, a rack customer, but I, I would ask if that individual is listening to us to please contact me in some way and via email if you could, so that I could get you the Zoom information, so that if you'd like to speak on the matter, I could bring you in via Zoom. Unfortunately, YouTube does not, we, we don't monitor YouTube, so.
But in terms of the appropriate notice, and even more than appropriate notice, I think that the Prop 218 and the Water Code sections have been followed, so I feel comfortable with the board wishing to proceed at this point without waiting for that particular comment. If that is a particular comment, we can certainly take the comment, but I think under 218 and the separate Water Code sections, all notices and opportunities have been complied with.
Okay. Well, I would not mind waiting a couple of minutes if we have this process to connect somebody.
Let me ask a question, Sylvia. It looks like there's a Mr. R. Johnson that is on the YouTube channel trying to get someone to answer questions.
Correct.
Would I supply him with the same link? Could we supply him with the same link?
Sure. If you have, I just unfortunately, I cannot, I'm not the account manager for YouTube, and that's what I was trying to find out, if I could get staff to send him a message through YouTube. I cannot, but if you, as a participant, are able to log in and send him that.
Why don't we just read the, the address over the, I mean, if he's.
He does not. So his comments are, please consider a reduction of rate for disabled veterans. My property, oh, there it is. My property location is 60 Barolo Ranch Mirage. Why are you ignoring, ignoring my messages? I own a home in Ranch Mirage. I am a Riverside County resident.
Is he a pumper? I guess we can't, we can't dialogue with him.
So, so I was just saying, if, if we want to tell him what the Zoom login is, why don't we tell him through the microphone since he's.
It's an address.
He's watching.
The link. Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna guess that's your name, if you type in your email address, I can send you the Zoom details into the, to the YouTube chat, if you're still listening.
Say it over the microphone.
I'm trying to find out if staff can send him a.
Could be, could be a bunch of adwords. Mr. President.
Yes.
While we're waiting for that, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So it's stated in the staff report, and while this may appear to be kind of redundant, it states in the staff report that these proposed increases are based on and in compliance with state law, with the requirements of state law. So could someone briefly delineate for me those requirements and in one form or another? Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. Under the Water Code, this district has the authority to impose a replenishment assessment charge and requires that a certain notice be given to the, to the public, to the property owners and the customers at the time that has to be adjusted. In addition to that, on a completely separate track, is Proposition 218 that not only requires that the notice be sent to members, to customers, but that it be done 45 days in advance and provide the majority protest option, where if a majority of the property owners' customers protested, then the fee could not be considered by the board for approval. So there's two completely separate groups of laws. One is the Water Code for CBWD in terms of notice to the public. The other is Proposition 218 that applies to various types of charges, as you know, and provides not only for the notice, but for a majority protest process, and that's what we're going through now.
So that's the intention of the statement in the staff report, that this now complies with all the requirements?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I did check with, I had staff checking while we're waiting for Mr. Johnson, and it appears that he is a residential account holder and not a rack account holder. So we will reach out to him and let him know that the June 8th would be the appropriate hearing for him to comment on the rates.
Yes. Make sure he has the Zoom connector.
Yes.
All right, well then, let's move forward. And we did hear at least what comment he had written into the thing, so thank you for reading that. At this time, the board is asked to consider the adoption of Resolution Number 2021-16, adopting the proposed schedule of rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge to be levied upon groundwater producers in the West Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit for fiscal years 2022 through 2026, and establishing the replenishment assessment charge for fiscal year 2022. And I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the motion.
We're taking all of them together.
This is the West.
This is the West.
So it's, it's the, it's the.
It's 2021-16 would be the resolution for the West. Good, okay, so I would move approval of Resolution 2021-16.
We have a motion from Director Nelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Director Aguilar. Any other comment before we go to roll call vote? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
No.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
4-1.
Okay, so that passed 4-1 in favor. And so this gets us to the second public hearing, which would be on the East Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit. This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on the proposed schedule of rate increases for the replenishment assessment charge to be levied upon groundwater producers in the East Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and establishing the replenishment assessment charge for fiscal year 2022. Clerk Bermudez, have we completed proper notification of this public hearing?
Yes, we have, Mr. President. Notice of the public hearing and the proposed rate increases were given by direct mail to property owners and tenants of 7,411 parcels, which could be affected by the proposed rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge in the East Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit, and notice was published in a newspaper of general circulation. As proof of proper notice of this hearing, we have the United States Postal Service Consolidated postage statement sent by standard mail and proof of publication from the Desert Sun and affidavit of posting.
Thank you. I will defer to legal counsel regarding the purpose of today's public hearing. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The requirements of Proposition 218, as well as the State Water Code, Section 31631, are being followed. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the mailing of a notice, and the notice was published in newspaper of general circulation at least 10 days in advance of the public hearing. That complies with both the Prop 218 procedures as well as the Water Code procedures. The purpose of the hearing is to hear oral testimony and to consider written protests concerning the proposed resolution, which would authorize the adjustments to rates. A customer or property owner is not required to provide oral testimony. However, a written protest must, must be submitted if one wishes to protest, and that written protest must specify that it is being submitted in protest, include the customer or property owner's name, parcel number, service address, and it must be signed. The written protests against the proposed rates are presented by a majority of the owners of identified parcels upon which the rates are to be imposed, the board may not impose the adjustment to the rates. If the written, if the actual, if the written protests against the proposed rates are not presented by a majority of the owners, then the board may impose the adjustments to the rates and consider adoption of the proposed resolution. As explained in the Prop 218 notice, the publications and the agenda for this meeting, the individuals wishing to address the board were given the opportunity to provide written comments in advance of the meeting via email or mail. Individuals may provide public comment during the meeting via telephone or online. Any protest submitted via email prior to the close of the hearing must include an image of the, of the protesters signing, and protests must be received by the district prior to the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing open and will request that those wishing to speak to please give your name and property location and limit your comments to three minutes. We'll now hear from anyone who wishes to come forward to speak. Again, I don't see any, I don't see anybody here physically present. Do we have anyone on, on the?
And I, Mr. President, I do not see any on Zoom, and I am just double-checking YouTube to make sure we have not missed others on there. And no, it does not appear that we have any members of the public on either YouTube or on Zoom.
Thank you. Have we received any written communications? This one we have.
Mr. President, we did receive, we have received written communications, which were distributed to the board and will be put on file.
Okay, so I am prepared to close the public hearing, however, before I do that, I would like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest the opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, state law prohibits us from accepting any further written protests. Are there any remaining written protests to be delivered to the board clerk? And again, we're not seeing or hearing any. And again, we're not seeing or hearing any. I hereby declare the public hearing closed. We will now have the written protests tabulated. Go ahead, Sylvia.
Sure. Mr. President, 7,411 parcels have been identified that could be affected by the proposed rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge in the East Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit. In this instance, a majority protest would exist if the district received 3,706 written protests prior to the close of the public hearing. Prior to the close of this public hearing, the district has received 66 written protests from qualifying owners and tenants of the identified parcels. A majority protest does not exist, and the board may proceed to consider adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any questions by members of the board?
No questions from me.
No questions either.
Okay, thank you. We're good here. At this time, the board is asked to consider the adoption of Resolution Number 2021-17, adopting the proposed schedule of rate increases to the replenishment assessment charge to be levied upon groundwater producers in the East Whitewater River Sub Basin area of benefit for fiscal years 2022 through 2026, and establishing the replenishment assessment charge for fiscal year 2022.
Mr. President, I'll move Resolution 2021-17.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Nelson. Thank you. Any, any other comment before we vote? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, so that passed 5-0. Thank you. That was our one item on, on the open part of today's meeting. We do have a closed session, so at this time, the board will recess into closed session to discuss the items on, on the agenda listed as under Item 7A, and we will reconvene following that to report out on closed session. Your vaccine? All right, so I believe Director Nelson's still on the line, so we have three directors present, and we do not have any reportable action from closed session, and we have nothing further on today's agenda, so hearing no objection, we are adjourned.